In the kind of ordinance if, if.
Yeah.
That's a question, that's not an answer. Is something like that necessary?
As long as it's totally understood. Because I see part here where it's a shot. So will somebody make a motion?
So moved.
I didn't make the motion. Will somebody make a motion? You moved. You moved, alright Jonathan. Second. Alright, second's made. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, Jimbo. It's approved. New business tonight. We have a presentation from the Berkeley Group. And we'll let you have the floor.
Right, thank you. Alright, so I'm Rebecca Cobb with the Berkeley Group. Just want to make sure everybody can hear me. Alright, thumbs up in the back, so that's great. Rebecca Cobb with the Berkeley Group. Also have Melissa Scott here with me with the Berkeley Group as well. You should be a little familiar with our faces now. We were here just a few weeks ago talking about the zoning ordinance. But we swapped seats. Melissa, I did that presentation and I'll do this one. And so the way that I would like to do this tonight is I have quite a bit to run through and I want to run through several things and I'd like to do it in its entirety. I'm going to try to answer some questions that I believe you all have been discussing and that sort of thing that Tracy has made me aware of. And then when I get to the end, there's going to be a time where I have some questions for you all to answer. And then we'll have a little bit more time for any of your questions and discussion and that sort of thing. So if you could just bear with me while I power through a bunch of information, I think towards the end will be better and hopefully I will have answered a lot of your questions by that point. So tonight I want to talk a little bit about why is solar here? How much is potentially coming? I know that, you know, some of you in this room have bukus of experience and so you can daydream for a moment if you want to during that period. I know some of you have been working on this for over a year now. And some of our public as well have been very involved. And so, you know, feel free to take a nap during that point. But then wake back up after we talk about impacts and things to consider. We're going to get into general recommendations that Berkeley Group has that we would give to any locality considering something like this. So there are some just basic things that you should include. And then we'll get into some Page County specifics. And then, like I said, we'll do some questions that I have and some discussion and then questions that you, the planning commission, have. So a solar boom, why are we seeing this solar boom? And basically it boils down to climate and environmental concerns. And so we're seeing lots of concerns, not just Virginia, not just the US, but globally. And so many entities are jumping in to slow that change and to make corrections. And so there's over 200 companies that have decided to go renewable as well as there's decreasing cost for solar. And the governor signed an executive order in September 2019 that requires a plan of action to produce 30% of Virginia's electricity for renewable sources by 2030 and then 100% carbon-free by 2050. The 2020 Clean Energy Act requires that our two main power companies, which is Dominion and Appalachian Power, that they work towards that carbon-free goal as well. So Dominion is to be carbon-free by 2045 and Appalachian Power carbon-free by 2050. And so also considering the Virginia Energy Plan and all of this that's going on, over the last six years, Virginia has seen a dramatic increase in the installed solar capacity going from 17 megawatts in 2014 to more than 470 in 2020. Solar and onshore wind targets are at 3,000 megawatts by 2022 and 5,500 megawatts by 2028. There's also storage targets, 3,100 megawatts by 2035. And so you're looking at basically in two years' time, 2020 to 2022, going from that 470 to thousands, 3,000 megawatts. So that means there's going to be a lot of growth and potentially a lot of applications coming forward to many localities. So some things to consider. First, I would, you know, like to talk about the impacts. So changes to land use. Some of these changes, you know, most of these are locating on agricultural land or forested land and these facilities are there for approximately 40 years. So that means that is not a farm, that is not a forest for approximately 40 years. And then the consideration needs to be, and after that 40 years, how easy is it going to be to transfer back into that use? So, you know, you've had grading, you've had milling and grazing, potentially herbicides on the sites. And so, you know, can you change it back to that land use that it was previously? How easy would it be to do that? There are visual impacts. So here we are, I had a beautiful drive into the Blue Ridge Mountains. And so you want to think about your scenic areas, your historic areas, those can be impacted visually. Also, there are environmental impacts. So one of the biggest there is these sites are quite large. And so there can be lots of erosion and sediment control that's happening and needs to take place to protect the site as well as stormwater precautions. And so you want to make sure that those are tight as possible so that you're not changing streams and that sort of thing. Also, animal movement will change when these big sites come in. So that's another consideration. As well as decommissioning the site. So, you know, the site is no longer there, but at what depth are we removing everything? What has been the bond that's in place if for some reason, you know, the county needs to say, okay, it needs to be decommissioned? What type of bond is in place to make sure that happens? The salvage value is something that's argued over a lot between the industry and localities as to whether or not they're going to consider salvage value. Because salvage value, you know, can change over time. And so are we updating the salvage values? Are we considering it at all or maybe, you know, not? So that's something to consider in decommissioning. Your economic impacts. So the sites, this is good news, I should say, is it's changing a little bit. So, you know, before we were seeing there's federal and state tax incentives for these facilities. And so you guys, the counties, the local governments, weren't receiving as much as you would for other sites because there was those reductions on MNT and that sort of thing. And so new legislation as of July 1 says some of that's changing. And we'll get into that a little bit more later. But so the economic impacts are looking a little better for the counties now. Still to consider is employment. You know, it's tied during construction and decommissioning, but not for the life of the facility. Also property values is another thing to consider, although there's been quite a bit of research that it doesn't change the property values that much of those surrounding properties. Because many people would rather, you know, have a line of trees and not see solar panels versus a subdivision or something like that. So it kind of depends on your county and what's happening here. Location considerations. So growth areas, they can be a barrier to populated residential areas. Say you have some areas that are growing naturally and you want those to continue to grow. Maybe your comprehensive plan pulls that out as an area that yes, we want to continue to grow. And so if a site locates there, that's going to change that growth pattern. One thing that I would say is, you know, some urban areas are actually welcoming this and they're using those sites to kind of preserve that as open space for the future. But, you know, in a county like yourselves, that may not be something that you want. Considering prime farmland, you have a lot of prime farmland here. And so is that something that you want to consider and make sure you preserve? Or do you have enough that it's not such a big deal if you lose some? So that's something that needs to be considered. As well as your ecological sensitive sites, your historical sites, whether it's locating next to adjacent residences and businesses, those are all things that need to be considered. You know, you don't want these necessarily locating on your best prime industrial properties because this takes up a lot of land and doesn't have that many jobs. So you don't want it taking up that prime industrial land, but it could be okay on brownfields and your transmission lines. So size considerations. One thing to be aware of is that the rough rule of thumb is that 10 acres is needed per megawatt. So if we're talking about 2 megawatts, that would be 20 acres, which is about the size of the White House complex. 500 megawatts or 5,000 acres would be needed and that's bigger than the National Mall. So that kind of gives you a little perspective of the range of sites that we're talking about. So is your locality ready? And I would say you're getting there. You're approaching being ready. One of the first steps you have already taken, which is your comprehensive plan considering if solar is addressed in that. So just April of this year, you did adopt a new comprehensive plan that does talk about solar. So that's a good check mark for you guys. And then the other pieces of this puzzle are your zoning ordinance and your conditional use permit or special use permit conditions. And so right now, we're considering the language for your zoning ordinance. So the Page County Comprehensive Plan, it states, and it's not on this slide, but I'll read it, that, and this is, I believe, one of the challenges that was in early on in the comprehensive plan. And it says, "Identifying appropriate sites for utility-scale renewable energy in Page County is extremely challenging due to the physical characteristics of the landscape and the importance of agriculture and tourism. Smaller utility renewable energy facilities might be a better fit for the county. In all cases, care should be taken through ensure measures such as setbacks, screening, preservation, and remediation of soils, and monitoring to avoid disturbing sensitive environmental conditions, cultural and economic resources, and existing land uses on nearby properties are appropriate." And so then you have preserving the environment is where this little bit is located as that challenge. And then you have several goals and policies that relate. And most of these are encouraging solar use on farms and residences and rooftops. There's also options for commercial and industrial uses on rooftops. And it states it wants to encourage solar energy by public utilities to serve Page County customers. So this is something that needs to be considered while you're drafting the zoning ordinance. You want these to work together. And so getting into the zoning ordinance and just some general recommendations that we would had any locality, as I mentioned, do, which would be add definitions for small-scale solar, medium-scale solar, and utility-scale solar. And so as, you know, most people feel the same way and as your comprehensive plan shows, you know, you have less concern about your small-scale, your medium-scale solar facilities and there's probably more concern about utility scale. And there's more mitigation that needs to happen for these utility-scale facilities. And so we would also say, along with defining these, you want these to be outlined in your zoning districts. Where do you actually allow the small-scale, the medium-scale, and utility scale? And so one thing, too, I want to pause for a moment that I think there's been some question about, you know, is this part of the zoning ordinance? Is this a separate document? How does this fit within Page County code? And so we recommend that this be a portion of your zoning ordinance. So this is an article of your zoning ordinance, just like currently you have confined animal feeding operations is, you know, kind of a separate portion, but it's in your zoning ordinance. And so this would be the same thing. It's in your zoning ordinance. State code allows you to control the uses. And so this is a use on the land and so you want to control it through your zoning ordinance. And so all of the recommendations here are to be as an article for your zoning ordinance. Another thing I think was a question for this area about definitions and zoning districts was about rooftop-mounted facilities, especially on chicken houses or maybe old chicken houses that are now storage units. And so what we would recommend here is that your small-scale definition is going to fit probably, I would almost say all of those are going to fit within that small-scale definition. So it would be allowed by right in all districts. It can be on rooftops, that sort of thing. But if you have some concerns and you want to open up the medium-scale definition and districts, that can be done. You could, you know, allow that. I would say you don't want to open it up completely to ag areas because someone could do a pretty hefty size medium scale that the neighbors don't necessarily like. So if you open it up to ag, you might want to say that it's, you know, confined to the rooftops of those confined animal feeding operations, if that's your goal, if that's your intention. And so we can do that through the zoning district and through the definitions. There's also, you might want to put some standards related to small-scale and medium-scale, especially if you want to open that up so that you can require site plans and just have some insurances that those are done properly in the way you intended. And so application site plan requirements. These are really important to make sure these things are in there because you want to prevent speculative applications. You don't want someone coming in and just saying, "Well, I think I want to, you know, do this size facility here on this location." And sort of just feeling you out and hoping to get that approval and then they'll, you know, flesh out their plans. You don't want that to happen. You also, you know, you want the applicant to thoroughly understand their site and to understand your community and your needs. And you also want to thoroughly understand their project. And so these are really important to require of an applicant. So identification of intended utility company, having aerial imagery, showing the location, showing the fenced areas, distance to adjacent properties and dwellings. You want a very full, robust concept plan. Wetland and other environmental inventories, a decommissioning plan and method of providing that cost. You also want traffic study modeling for construction and decommissioning because that's very different from average, everyday work. You know, they'll say, "Oh, there's, you know, hardly be a car." But, you know, during construction and decommissioning, that could be quite different. Also estimated construction schedule as well as application fee to cover any additional review costs, advertising, or other required staff time. So these are, you know, quite large applications that, you know, Tracy's not used to getting these every day and it's hard to manage that along with her other responsibilities. So you, and sometimes, you know, you're not a solar expert, you're, you know, you need some assistance to review some of those things. So you want to make sure your costs are covered to be able to reach out to those that can help you. So looking at minimum development standards. These you want to establish and, you know, while every community needs to put these in, they're not going to look the same for every community. So this is where we begin to see, okay, what does Page County want? What fits best within Page County? So these are distance to existing or permitted solar facilities, minimum setback requirements, vegetative buffer and ground cover requirements, fencing, lighting, the other structures that are there, what they look like, heights, site maintenance, signage, all of these things you need to consider, but yours isn't going to look exactly like your neighboring county and it shouldn't. So diving in a little bit more to those minimum standards and considering what's been drafted for you all and what changes you all have suggested, we'll start to kind of go through those a little bit. So looking at the location standards, number one requires, you know, that a facility would be 2 acres, but maximum is less than 500 acres and that includes the required open space. And so one thing I want to be clear on what is that required open space bit? So there's, you know, some question about, okay, 500 acres, is that 500 acres of panels? How much of that is panels? And that sort of thing. And so, you know, no, the 500 acres is allowing the facility to locate and make sure that they do consider those wildlife corridors, making sure they do consider the setback requirements. And so that's why number two comes in as a further suggestion of that to say, okay, here's your 5-acre site and the percentage of that site that would actually have panels and equipment is 65%. And so the rest of that site is your open space, your wildlife corridors. And so basically if we're looking at a 500-acre site, that's saying 325 acres would be panels, the small rows between the panels, inverters, accessory structures, the fencing. And then 175 acres would be wildlife buffers, corridors, those types of things. And so, you know, also when you consider this 500-acre number, you know, keep in mind 1 megawatt requires 10 acres. And so, you know, I think early on during the discussions, there was, you know, some talk that you wanted to hold, you know, your sites to about 40 megawatts or below. And so that's how we established this, you know, 500 acres number, just because we're also considering your topography. And so, you know, you're not going to probably be able to put those panels as tightly together on some of your sites as, you know, somebody out towards the coast is going to be. So that's why we increased that 500 or increased that acreage to 500 to make sure there was adequate space for everything on the site. But I'm a visual person and so, you know, talking about 500 acres sometimes, you know, just is in one ear and out the other. So I like to look at images. So this is a site that I worked on recently in another county. It's 80 megawatts on 800 acres. It's approximately 70% panel coverage. The topography there is very flat and so they were able to really scrunch those panels in pretty closely. They have four wildlife corridors along the wetlands and streams and there's 150-foot or more setback. So just kind of talking through this picture for a moment, what you're looking at. The red line is the project limits. So that's really identifying, this is our 800 acres. Here is our full project. This is the 800 acres. And then you'll see another dash line that's purple just inside of that. And that is indicating the setback area and shows where there's going to be planting. So you'll see for this particular site, the light green marks kind of to the south and on each kind of corner, maybe one up at the very top there at the north, too. So those are areas on the site that were not already vegetated enough to block the panels. So this company is going to, you know, plant landscaping there. Everywhere else, they have preserved the natural vegetation and it's enough to block the visibility. This site, also you'll notice the blue areas, that's wetlands, which also then serves for wildlife corridors. And so the fencing of the site is not one big perimeter fence. So it kind of goes around these big blocks of the black-gray panels that you see. And it's open around those wetland areas so that animals can travel the site. So considering the next few location standards. Number three was we identified planning areas as something to be considered. And I think there was a question about, well, what is the planning areas? And so that's something that, you know, is generic term, but you guys in your comprehensive plan, you use tiers and talk about, and I think it's on another slide, but you have some specific language that you refer to regarding these. And so you've edited this and I think it's a good edit. It works because that's what you want. You want it to match exactly what your county has. And so number four as well, this item was edited out. This talks about forest areas being preserved. And then number five talks about the prime farmland and preserving those or avoiding those areas and therefore preserving those. And so, you know, a couple of thoughts for you is, you know, forestry, I completely understand taking that out. It's not completely, you know, specific for you to be able to manage. And the concern with making it specific and saying, you know, it shouldn't be this percentage of forest on the site, is that then, you know, some companies might come in and clear-cut the site and then come to you and say, hey, we would, you know, like this application and it doesn't have forest on it, you know? And you don't want that sort of thing to happen, just that getting around those rules. So, you know, if this isn't something that you want to stick firm to, to say, you know, no forested areas, then sure, you know, take it out. Again, that's a decision for you guys. The farmland, this is a map from your comprehensive plan. Your comprehensive plan does talk about, you know, preserving agricultural areas. And so, you know, you might want to give this a little bit more consideration. If you're wanting it to be specific, then you could, you know, we could edit this to say, "Shall not include more than 30% soils categorized as prime farmland." Or whatever you want that percentage to be. I'm just throwing a number out there, don't hold me to it. But, you know, that's where you need to make that consideration because you do have a lot of prime farmland. And I believe, you know, you have looked at a map that shows you if you applied all of these things, what is left, where might we see solar facilities? And so Tracy shared that with me and I was like, wow, okay, yeah, it's, you know, really gearing them towards this, you know, middle section of your county, which happens to be where your prime farmland is. And so when you, you know, completely say no farmland, you know, that means probably no utility-scale facilities. And so if that's what your goal is, fine. Or if you want very few facilities, then sure, make that percentage number, you know, be something high that says, you know, sites shouldn't have more, you know, than, or should have less than, you know, 60% prime farmland. Or adjust that number to, you know, what you Or adjust that number to, you know, what you want, if you want to really prevent them and preserve your farmland, or whether you just want to, you know, make sure you are preserving some of your farmland, but not so strictly. So then getting into number six, and this is where, you know, I was talking about that number three that I think there was a question on. And so, yeah, what you guys have identified is your primary and secondary service areas, which is exactly what you need to do. I totally agree with, I think you've, you know, struck in number three, and then number seven, that's here below, and to just combine it here to number six, I think that's great. We would probably recommend tweaking the language a little bit, just to make it smoother for reading, but, you know, looks great to us. The number eight there, no utility scale solar facility shall be located within two miles of another existing or permitted utility scale facility unless the combined acreage is less than 500 acres. This is one that if you, you know, decide that that 500 acres max facility size is too much and you want to reduce it, I would suggest reducing this one as well. Number nine, utility scale solar facility shall be within one mile of electric transmission line. This is important, and, you know, it can be adjusted though, however you like. So if you want that to be half a mile, if you want that to be, you know, you're okay with five miles, you can adjust those numbers. Then looking at number 10, this was proposed to be deleted. It's regarding that facility should not be proximate to residences, historic, cultural, recreational, or environmental sensitive areas and scenic view sheds. And so your comprehensive plan references being careful about disturbing sensitive environmental conditions and locating near cultural and economic resources. And so you want to make sure that this is sufficiently covered in your ordinance. And so, you know, by striking this, it might be okay. I do have another consideration for you. So currently, if any of you have a copy with you of the draft, if you want to look at 73K, there's an applicant requirement to inventory and provide an impact statement. And so there's also, the concept plan requires allowing the county to request photos and visual simulations to access the visual impact. So you've got a couple of things in there that are referring to some of this. I would also recommend, if you're going to strike this item, to add language to 73M that says visual, and that's a visual impact analysis, and requiring that to consider these specific things here. So have that visual impact analysis, consider its proximity to historic, cultural, recreational, environmental sensitive, and scenic view sheds. And that, you know, puts the onus on the applicant to say, hey, you know, we find this important, we want to know, you know, what's around, and then how you're going to mitigate it. And so then, once, you know, the applicant comes forward with that information, you guys have to decide, okay, have they, you know, identified all the appropriate sites? Was anything missed? And then in identifying those sites, are they mitigating those as they should? Because, you know, each site is going to be different. You know, one might locate next to a recreational facility, and sure, the setback that you've set, the landscaping that you require is going to be sufficient and fine. Other, you know, sites might need, you know, something else. And so you do want to have that open ability to think about those specific sites and what might need to be mitigated, especially for those. So some other standards that was supplied. There is setback requirements of, from dwellings of 200 feet and property lines of 100, and that's external property lines, of 150 feet. And then you all added that substations and utility switch yards should also comply with these minimum setback requirements. And so one thought that I had when I read this is, you know, a lot of these, you know, people are already somewhat used to, they're not as taken aback by a substation or something like that. And so if your idea is, you know, hey, we want to preserve our open space and our ag land and that sort of thing, then you may not want to have such a stringent setback for your substations and switch yards. And so I would suggest pulling this out, creating it as a separate item, and establishing setbacks for these, and establishing landscaping requirements for these. And so this, you know, might be something that you require 50 foot setback from property lines and 100 feet for dwellings, and then have, you know, several rows of staggered evergreens or, you know, something like that. Again, that's for you all to consider and decide what you feel is appropriate. But, you know, it just struck me a little bit as odd when a lot of the requirements seem to be, you know, wanting to, you know, maintain some of your acreage, and yet this was, you know, extending some of that acreage use. This is another map taken from your comprehensive plan, looking at slopes. And so you've got this condition in there that says they should not locate on slopes 10% or greater, and those sites shall be graded more than 50% of the site surface area, and you all have added where the panels are located. And so, you know, really looking at this map, you see that, okay, those areas really are bringing the sites more to the center of your county, more towards those main thoroughfares. And so that's something to consider as well. Do you, you know, want to push those utility scale sites into those areas? Maybe, maybe not. Maybe you don't want them on those bigger slopes because you have greater erosion and sediment control concerns. So those are, you know, things that you need to weigh and consider. I would also say, as far as the edit that you've added here, it actually opens it up to applicants a bit more, and I'm not sure that was the intention, by saying that 50% of the site surface area of where the panels are located, then allows the applicant to not consider in their grading calculations their access roads or other equipment even. And so I think you want to, you know, make sure that those access roads, make sure all the equipment is part of this calculation. And so I wouldn't have this line in there. Maybe there was some other intention, and we can, you know, word that a different way to make sure we're capturing exactly what you want. So fencing is something that I believe you all have talked about, and it's something that I think was edited pretty early on during this, so that 75G has been edited. I would say, you know, you do want to consider the access corridors for wildlife. I know that you added some language in there that the Department of Game would, you know, consider these applications. I think that that's great, that's important. You also want to make sure here that, you know, even if you're not going to require a specific number of corridors, you know, you could say something like, at least one access corridor on projects 80 acres or larger, and that's kind of going with that Department of Game recommendation of not clustering more than 40 acres. So you could kind of follow their recommendation and put something like that in your ordinance. We could, you know, adjust it however you desire. One thing I would say would be important to keep in though, is this end part here that says the fencing should be kept open to allow for that movement. So you don't want any confusion with the applicant to think that they could do a perimeter, just a big fence, that you do want those corridors considered. And so a big, heavy topic, decommissioning. My biggest warning, if I could have like a red flashing sign right here, would be, do not accept salvage value. If you feel you have to accept some salvage value, because applicants are going to request that every time, they're going to request that you consider salvage value, then I would say only consider a portion of the salvage value. And that's because, you know, one, salvage value is unpredictable, and, you know, even if you're getting new evaluations every so often and a new bond to cover it, you know, in that in-between time, something could change, as well as there's upfront cost for decommissioning. So if the county did have to go into decommissioning of a site or something like that, and you have said, sure, we'll accept salvage value, you had nothing to get the project started with. So that's coming out of county pocket to, you know, start that legal argument probably, and then maybe even physically decommissioning the site, as well as, you know, if someone goes in to decommission the site, there could be damage to panels and things like that that you're, you know, not anticipating. And so maybe your salvage value is up here, but then once you actually, you know, receive all of those components, the value is down here. So, you know, that's my big warning. I'll get off that soapbox now. As far as form of security, that's a hot topic, and it's not one that I can answer. That's something that you all need to discuss with your county attorney. They are going to be the ones, he, I guess, should be the one to say, yes, this is an acceptable form for the county. We feel comfortable accepting this. We, you know, have these mechanisms in place, this is the best one. That's not something, I'm not, I'm not a legal person, so I can't advise you on that. But I can tell you, have your county attorney, that certainly this whole thing, but especially that portion. Also you want decommissioning to be updated on a regular basis, so that's something else. And that term of how often, you know, a lot of places say every five years, but again, that's up to you and your legal team to consider. So just taking a look at a few more edits. 73F in the document I was provided, you've added, in the decommissioning plan, there are requirements of things that should be included, and towards the end, you've added number seven, that says the applicant's responsible to provide the decommissioning plan, and they shall be responsible for any fees associated with the expense of the plan. I would suggest moving this. I think it's a great thing to have in there, but fits a little bit better with your conditions. And so I would say, let's keep it, but let's move it to conditions. Then 73J, wetlands and waterways and floodplains shall be inventory delineated and avoided, and you've added, depending on site-specific conditions, siting in these areas will be addressed in conditions of a special use permit. This really weakens this statement, it opens up a dialogue to allow an argument, basically. And so I try to avoid those where I can with applicants, and so, you know, lots of applicants try to, you know, push the envelope as far as they can, see what they can get away with. And I really don't think you want this type of facility in wetlands, in waterways, in floodplains. I mean, that just, you know, creates more, you know, potential for erosion and sediment control problems. It creates, you know, potential problems for those neighbors downstream. And so I really like keeping this to the strong point of these areas should be avoided. But again, that's something for you all to consider. Then 73L, community impact assessment, including economic impact, shall be required. This is a great addition, and especially in light of some of the legislative changes that have taken place. So this will, you know, open up a lot of great conversations for the county with any applicants that come in. Then there's 75R, any other condition added by, and you've struck in the planning commission or Page County Board of Supervisors as part of a SUP approval. And so this line here is, you know, when it's talking about part of a SUP approval, it's talking about the entire process. And so you, I think you need yourselves in here, you know, sometimes you'd like to back off and say, no, not us, but in this case, you really want to have that ability to talk with the applicant, to, you know, maybe negotiate some of those conditions, work those out. And without this planning commission statement in here, then that kind of takes it off of you, so you don't have that opportunity to talk to the applicant to add conditions. And so, yeah, we're talking about the full process. I think you guys want to be included on that to make sure when you pass something to the board, you're passing, you know, the best thing to them. You know, it's up to them at that point whether they accept all the work that you've done and your efforts, but at least you have, you know, done as much as you can at that point. So legislative changes, I've, you know, talked about it here and there a little bit, or hinted at it a little bit here and there. And so this year, there were 10 or so bills that were actually passed that relate to solar. And so we've provided the county with a sheet that talks about, you know, these bills and gives, you know, a very brief summary of them. We're also, you know, available to talk about it more, but basically machinery and tools tax are changing, there's staggered now. So over the life of the facility, that machinery and tool tax percentage reduction comes up, and they get less of a reduction as time goes on. You can also negotiate signing agreements in areas eligible as federal opportunity zones, and you can negotiate with the applicant to receive reasonable cash payment, real property, or construction of public improvements. And I think this is one that you guys, you know, considered before when you had an application, and there was some debate on, you know, whether you could do that or not. So now you have an answer, you officially can do it. And so this is one that I would recommend that we put in some language to kind of, you know, just make sure the applicants know, hey, we can do this, and we're probably expecting to do this. So, you know, we've got some very simple language that we could put in that just says, in approving a conditional use permit for any solar facility, the board may include conditions that require dedication of real property, of substantial value, or substantial cash payments, or, or construction of substantial public improvements, the need for which is not generated solely by the granting of a conditional use permit, so long as such conditions are reasonably related to the project. So a lot of words just to say, hey, we can talk about some more money for the county, and I think you would want that in your ordinance. Another thing that's developing, you heard me mention, storage early on, that 3,000 megawatts of storage is planned for 2035. And something that I have seen is a lot of increase in the solar facilities also having battery storage. And so right now, that's not something that's in the draft. I would recommend we add language to just at a minimum, you know, because we're still learning a lot about the battery storage, but at a minimum, we say, you know, that it has to be monitored 24/7, that there has to be automated fire suppression, just to put those precautions in there for your facilities. And so just a couple of more slides, and then- And so, just a couple of more slides, and then we'll get into a little bit of discussion, some questions I have for you. So the, the next steps would be to incorporate edits. I've kind of hinted at several edits that you might wanna consider. And so, you know, if you decide to go with those edits, I would incorporate those, and then proceed with providing you all with a final draft to review. And then, if you're happy with that final draft, we would schedule public hearings, and then there would be adoption into the zoning ordinance. And so again, like I said, this is going into the zoning ordinance. So, a little bit of questions from me. So, you know, I said I talked through a lot of things, and I have some specific questions for you. And the way I like to do this is just to kind of get a feel for you all as a group. So sort of just a straw poll. I'll talk through, I've got about seven questions here. And so initially, I would just kind of like a raise of hands, who is, you know, in agreement, and then we can kind of work from there. So the first thing is the minor edits. Again, if you have your document with you, these were seventy-three F, seventy-three J, seventy-three L, and seventy-five R, as well as the legislative changes and the storage changes. So just a reminder. So here are those minor edits. So moving that decommissioning item into the, into the conditions portion, the wetlands item, striking out that, and making sure it is strong, and that those floodplain areas are avoided. And then seventy-five R, leaving in that the planning commission can add and tweak the conditions. And then, let's see, then we talked about the negotiate with the applicant, and that battery storage should be monitored 24/7, and automated fire suppression should be deployed as well. So just by raise of hands, are you okay with those minor edits? Hold them up and keep them up. I'm trying to. Okay. So we, we look a little split. So those that did not raise your hands, what are your concerns within those minor edits?
I just wanna understand it better before I say yes or no.
So is that something that you would be comfortable with me providing a draft of those edits? You know, 'cause I know it's a lot to take in and listen to, but maybe if you have a hard copy, if I, you know, do those edits.
Yeah, I'm personally comfortable with it. I, like I said, I'm just trying to understand, 'cause there was a lot there.
Right, yes.
You know, and, and, so, but, most of it, yeah, I would say I would personally agree.
Okay.
Go around, anybody else?
I think there were some hands down this direction that didn't get raised. So what's concerned, concerning you guys?
I mean, I'm like Bernie, I mean, if you, once you put something together, we can look at it, and I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I agree with it also.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question about battery storage. We haven't really heard a lot about that. What does it look like? Are they huge containers? I mean, what are we talking about? Are we talking about a tractor-trailer type container? What are we looking at?
So it varies, you know, by company, company, depending on their, their setup and what they like. But yeah, this image basically shows, you know, down to, you know, some of the smallest components, the battery cell, up to the battery container, yes, it, it looks very much like a tractor-trailer container. One of the other conditions is, you know, that they place those kind of all, you know, centrally located on the facility. And, you know, again, it's screened, so you don't really see it.
So presumably not within the buffer areas or anything like that, right? They have to-
Nothing.
Within the fence.
Right, nothing should be, you know, no structure should be, you know, within that buffer area. The buffer area is a buffer. It's trees, it's, you know, grasses, it's whatever. So I, I think I feel comfortable that, you know, we can, you know, maybe provide you with what those edits would look like, and you guys can take a look at that. So I'll move on to the next question. So this is seventy-two B and the definitions. Early on, I talked about medium-scale solar, and, you know, there was some, you know, question about including ag, and including the medium-scale having, you know, roof locations, and, and, you know, being more specific about that, 'cause right now it does, you know, talk about that these can be on commercial and industrial, which they would typically put it on their roof. But if you wanted to be more specific about that, we can certainly do that. So, you know, how does everyone feel about going ahead and making those changes to the medium-scale solar for the definitions and where they would be allowed? Show of hands. Put them up.
Just for clarification-
Yes.
-can you go back to that slide?
Sure. So this gives you, it's not the full language that's in your document, but it, it shows you just kind of the basics, that medium-scale, we're talking about 999 kilowatts, one to three acres.
Two thousand and two.
Yes. Allowed by writing commercial and industrial districts. And so we're talking about, you know, saying that, being more clear that these can be on roofs, number one, for the commercial and industrial districts. And then, opening it up to ag, confined feeding operation things, and having those on roofs.
And any, any verbage, just like we're gonna see it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
How familiar are you with the amount of commercial and industrial property in Page County?
I have just looked at that a little bit. I, I wouldn't say that I'm extremely familiar, but, you know, we've started looking at the zoning ordinance and looking at it from that perspective.
Would you say that in Page County, we are 98% ag?
Like many rural counties, yes, you're predominantly ag.
So anytime you relegate to commercial and industrial, and certainly when you get to brownfields, those things just don't exist. So how about an ordinance that says you have to do it in areas that have to be rezoned, is really what you would be saying?
So this is about allowing, for those sites that, that are zoned commercial or industrial, allowing them to put something on their roof to offset their energy demands. And so, you know, it's not, if you don't have any, then this just doesn't get, get used, but it's there in case something ever is rezoned, so that-
They're trying to change it to county, so.
Right.
Kind of changes to more commercial and industrial.
I appreciate, I appreciate your answer, thank you.
Okay. So, show of hands, are we okay with seeing some revisions about the medium-scale definition? All right, looks like I have consensus on that one. No problem. I anticipated doing this, 'cause I know I went through a lot of, of things. So looking at seventy-five A, one and seventy-five A eight, which is that max acreage, which was 500 acres, and I'll go ahead and go back to that. So we're looking at this number one and number two. Are we, let's see, how should I phrase this? Are we okay with how it is written today, and we are going to leave it at the 500 acres and the 65%? Raise of hands.
No, one question.
Yes.
I believe you said that that was selected based on a certain electrical value, production value. I think the example you showed us was about twice the power value. As Iris was said, 40, I believe you said, that was the base, 500.
Right, so, you know, from, from what we heard, you were wanting, you know, about 40 megawatts, and it's one megawatt per 10 acres to potry setbacks, or, you know, things of that nature. The site that I showed you that we talked about, that was 800 acres, one thing that they did is, one portion of their site backs up to several residential homes. So they backed off and created more setback in that area, to be further away from those homes, be more neighborly. And so, you know, this type of setup allows that type of negotiation.
Just wanna make sure I understand how you selected 500 acres. And did you think that came from this board? That that, that that request came from us?
So I can, I can answer that. Where they got that language from, the only thing that the Berkeley group was sent, was language that the Comp Plan Subcommittee had worked on. And that's where the 40 was mentioned. It was mentioned in the draft prepared by us, or, I'm sorry, being comprehensive.
So you might find this is not as quick and simple for these members, as one of the things that we wanted to know is how we got that 500 acres started. And then, in a subcommittee situation, because we had questions about that, we obviously had questions about 65%. And in the end, we had some members of our city saying, why are we even concerned about that? How about the area that the, the solar panels actually sit on? And so we've been kind of, we've had many discussions. As you say, many of us have had an opportunity, lots of opportunity. There are lots of things in this presentation which we have maybe not made a determination, but we certainly had a lot of discussion. This however, is really not one of them. So to expect a decision from people that don't even know where 500 came from, and it's almost universally not well-accepted, either because it's too small or it's too large, depending on who you speak to, I think you ought to spend some time on that.
And, and that's what I'm trying to do. So, and that's what, you know, by, by asking the question-
A show of hands is gonna be hard, I think.
I, I would like to go a little bit further. If you let me do the show of hands, then we can, you know, step into, you know, what is everyone's comfort level, and, and start talking about the numbers a little bit. You know, 'cause yeah, I realize that this has been, you know, something that you discussed, and something that you haven't seen, a lot of information like you have tonight. And so, you know, while it's fresh in your minds, and while, you know, we can talk about it a little bit, that's exactly what I'd like to do. So if I could first get a show of hands to see, you know, are we okay with 500 acres?
Can I ask a question before you?
Yeah, me too.
You can do that. So, we, we, we've got the story, it was 40, and she went through a rational process to come up with that. So if we agree, what do we do? If we don't agree, it's probably gonna be the, the outcome. What, what do we do? We've got a rational pathway from 40 to an acreage. If there's less than a show of hands, what do we do?
So, so then I would say, you know, there may be some numbers in your mind. You know, if you're not comfortable with 500, then maybe in your mind, you're thinking, I would be okay with 200, I'd be okay with 250, I would be okay with 1,000. And so from there, we can kind of establish, what's the consensus? 'Cause I could probably tell that, you know, this group, not everyone's going to agree, and that's okay.
I can tell you there will be no consensus. And that's, that's the truth, there will be no consensus.
So, so let's, let's play it out for a little bit. And if, if it goes, you know, too long, 'cause I, I don't wanna keep you here forever, and I do have some other questions I'd like to, to get through. So if it goes too long, then we'll, you know, put a pin on that item, and get through some other items, and then, towards the end, maybe we'll come back for some further discussion, or we'll discuss further at another time. Yes, ma'am?
Wouldn't that be, I'm trying to understand why the 65% of 500 and not a certain figure establishing the maximum size of a site within the fence, which is, I understand, about the same thing, right?
So I, I think it is talking about the same thing. So when we're talking about 65%, we are talking about the fenced areas. So because, you know, you've got your, your mitigation, your wildlife corridors going through there, those are sort of, of buffers, as well as outside the fence, because you want your fence to be, you know, hugged up around your site, you want your landscaping and your setbacks to be outside of that fence, so that no one's looking at the fence, no one's looking at the facility that's internal. So this 65% is getting at that. It is saying that those fenced areas that include panels, that include inverters, can only be 65% of the site.
But I'm not sure that that's necessarily relevant, if you, if you pardon my, my input. I mean, if you were to say 325 acres, okay, 65% of, of 500, wouldn't that be clearer? Or why did you adopt a, a percentage measure of the total? 'Cause you're considering the total size of the site. Does it really matter how big the site is generally? 'Cause we really wanna regulate what's within the fence and the buffer zone.
So, so it sounds like you're taking the perspective that, you know, every site is gonna be 500 acres, and that, that's not the case.
I understand.
You know, you know, you may have a site that is 100 acres, and so, you know, you want to say that 65% of that 100 acres would be under panel.
Okay. I guess what I was alluding at, maybe not to exceed 65% and a total maximum of, meaning putting a limitation on the site, but you're doing it through the 500, I see that.
Right, yeah, I mean, yeah, if you, if you wanted to, you know, then also add a, a cap, yeah, yeah, you could do that, but-
Because how do you apply that to sites that are not contiguous? You know, we see a project that was approved in Seaton City, where the, the sites weren't contiguous. Here in this county, we've had applications for solar panel sites where the, the panels were contiguous on one parcel. That's not always the case, like on the picture anyhow.
So, so you would still consider the project as a whole? So even, you know, if this project has, you know, property on this side of the road, and property on this side of the road, you're gonna consider that, you know, this site cannot be greater than 500 acres, and, and this total site cannot have 65%? So you would kind of, in your mind, take out the road, just imagine the project itself?
So this, so the percentage allows more flexibility, is what you're telling me?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so, I don't think, is anybody gonna raise their hand at all? For 500 acres is okay? No, no hands, okay. So, let me, let me see, by show of hands, who wants to increase the 500 number? No one. All right, we're getting somewhere, folks. So, that means everyone wants to-
I don't think so.
I, I'm not, my advice is, put this to the very end, 'cause I'm telling you right now, this is gonna be the hardest thing you're gonna get done. Because, especially, 'cause I'll go back to what Kathy was talking about, I mean, you're actually looping in like three challenges here, because a 100-acre pro, deal with 90% utilization is gonna be 10 times easier to get through than one that is 500 acres and 30% utilization. So that's the first problem, we use this sort of percentage and acreage thing. The second thing is, I'm actually, now, I'm the anarchist of this group, so just take that with a grain of salt. I don't wanna cap on it. And the reason is, is because there may be a project that makes sense to be 600 acres. Now, does, does that mean every project should be over 500? No. But as soon as we put, it has to be less than 500 acres, then that 501-acre project that would work gets blown up. So that's why I don't really support a cap at all. Again, I'm not expecting anybody else to do that. But, but yeah, I think, to, back to this, like what Jamie was talking about, I think this is an area where we're probably gonna need a lot more education from you all, just on how do, how have other localities done it? Again, do they aim at a, at a megawatt sort of maximum, and then they back into it, sort of the way you guys did on this one? Is it really sort of acreage-driven, because people don't want a project that's a certain size? Again, back to what Kathy was saying, a 500-acre project that is sort of fronting on one road is a totally different animal than if it's on 10 parcels that is, you know, 10 acres apiece, and it's gonna have massive road front, I mean, all this kind of stuff. So I think that's sort of the other challenge here, is we just need a lot more direction as to- as to how you guys in the past have seen people arrive at whatever this number is. And the other thing I would say is, on this commission, the Board of Supervisor and everything else, ninety percent of what drives what you think that number is, is whether you want these things at all. So if you don't want them, then you just want to push that number down as low as possible, so you get a de facto, we don't have any. And if you're in favor of it, then again, you have some limit, so I'll shut up now.
If we're going to leave it to the end, can we move to the end?
That's what I think we ought to do.
Could you please show us this slide? I think you skipped through it, the one of the five hundred superimposed on the town of Luray, because I think that gives some perspective. I think a lot of us have trouble visualizing five hundred acres. That's already pretty large.
I don't know that it's in this. I actually took that out because I had a concern. Yeah, that's not...
We have it here in Alphaca.
It's in the...
It's pretty compelling. I mean, it's the whole town of Luray from Main Street.
That's why we took it out.
All the way to, you know...
So I wanted to, initially, I created that slide because I wanted to bring it home, sort of speak, so that, you know, because again, I'm better with images, I'm also better with, you know, somewhere where I'm familiar with. So I wanted to pick something that you're familiar with, and that I was a little bit familiar with in driving here. And so, for the people recording, and for anyone listening, I am not suggesting that a site be located here in Luray. That is not, this is just for demonstration purposes, to imagine what five hundred acres looks like in an area that you're familiar with. So I kind of just did it right around, you know, the building where we are, it goes along Main Street, and then Leaks Field, I'm going to butcher those roads since I don't...
Since Road, Lakewood.
Since I don't have it. So that is to give you sort of an idea of, this is five hundred acres. Because I have a hard time, you know, picturing that unless I know, you know, where I'm looking. And then I can go, wow, that's a lot, or, you know, no, that's not that much.
Well, that's a very useful document. Thank you so much, because that really puts the five hundred acres in perspective. And that's a very large area of land.
So I'm glad that you found it useful. Just make sure everyone knows, I'm not saying do a solar facility right here in town. And I'm not saying it should be five hundred acres or anything like that. It's just to give you...
Don't worry, they shouldn't be this board anyway. It's town limits, they have their own thing.
Right. Well, and I don't want the town to, you know, start calling me tomorrow morning, what did you do? So...
I say we move to the end.
Yeah, let's...
We'll never move off this part.
Let's put a pin in the size. And so the next question I have is about the farmland limit. So this seventy-five A five was taken out, and I just want to, you know, make sure that you do want to take that out, or if you would, you know, want to have it in there, but have, you know, something that makes it more exact. So maybe including a percentage that says the site shouldn't, you know, have more than thirty percent farmland, or, you know, whatever.
Can you go back to that?
Yes, I will. So, yeah, there's your number five, and it says utility scale solar facilities shall minimize and avoid locating on farmland soils, so soils categorized as prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance. So that, you know, takes out all of your green area there, which you may not want to do.
I think it just says to avoid. I don't think it takes it out.
So, you know, and that is a valid point, it's something for you to consider. I felt like when it was strucken, stricken, that that was, you know, probably the concern, is that you would take a very stringent application of that. And so if you don't want to do that, you could put in, you know, a percentage, or you could completely leave it out, however you wish.
It says shall.
But it says...
It says shall.
That does not need to be stricken. We know that farmland is threatened all across the USA. You know, it is Planning Commission recommendations generally to protect farmland. That doesn't need to come out. Besides, it's in a comprehensive plan. It's one of the values that we treasure in the county. That needs to...
So would you, my question would be, for show of hands, would you like me to draft something that includes a percentage for this? So that we are considering farmland, you know, to some degree, instead of striking it as it is right now? So, show of hands, do you want me to draft something new for this number five?
I think it just needs to be...
I would like to see. I think completely, the way it reads right now is says shall, and then it takes it out of that, and that leaves, I just, you know, it almost leaves us saying that it would be zero solar. If we strike it out, that opens it up completely. So yours is a compromise position, and it would be nice to see that, I've not seen that before.
Okay.
That's my, that's one opinion.
Right, right.
I concur.
Okay. So, show of hands, are we in agreement with this, to see some revision of percentage for farmland?
The reason we had the discussion about eliminating is it didn't have a measurable factor.
Right, right, yes. And that's hard to, you know, like, you know, you're both sitting at the table right now, and you have two different views of, you know, interpretation and reading this. So, you know, having that factor in there does help do that. So I feel like, you know, we can, you know, maybe move on from there and see what I can come up with on that. So Visual Impact Analysis, the seventy-three M, let's go back. So this was taken out of the ordinance. Again, it, you know, says approximate, it's pretty vague, there's no, you know, measurable thoughts there. But I think, you know, your comprehensive plan shows that it is important to you, it is also in the draft in a couple of other places, and we would also recommend that in the Visual Impact Analysis portion, that it specifically call out these things, and say that the applicant has to consider these items. And that allows them, you know, to really pay attention to that, and then gives you all the option to see what they provide, and then make sure they're mitigating properly. So are we okay with adding that item into seventy-three M? Show of hands? No one? Okay.
Well, it won't hurt to add it there, but I don't see what's vague about the word "proximate." Proximate isn't vague at all.
Well, I think the difficulty...
Or maybe adjacent?
I think you could argue, in our county, every inch is historic, cultural, recreational, environmentally sensitive, and safe.
And everything is...
And safe. So a hundred percent. That's why, that's the difficulty. It's not proximate, that's not the problem. The problem is, it creates the argument.
Right. So, but what I've heard from the group is that, you know, this has already been stricken, so that was, you know, decided previously to strike that. And, you know, what I'm hearing now is that there's, you know, not a desire to add anything further that we're okay with. It's seventy-three K, and then another portion of the ordinance does talk about inventory and impacts, and so there's no need to add anything in seventy-three M. So that's what I have heard. I don't see any disagreement there, so we'll move on from that. Yes, ma'am?
I don't know that it was fully understood by all the members of the Planning Commission, what taking this, striking this might involve. And it is contrary in my view to the comprehensive plan. I certainly was not in support of that and did not vote for taking this out. I believe I wasn't the only one, and I think we're making, we're making a big mistake not protecting the, our assets that are mentioned in the comprehensive plan. I think we need to be very careful. So if you feel that you can add sufficient protections in seventy-three K and M, then I'd be okay with that. But I don't think this should have been stricken out at all.
So, you know, there are protections in there. What I have proposed is just another element to add in, but from what I'm getting from the rest of the group is that's not desired at this time. So I'm going to go ahead and move on. I appreciate your input, though, on that. So number six, switch yards and substations seventy-five C. This was regarding setbacks, and so it was added into the general setbacks for the site. Yeah, here we go. So it was added in that substations and utility switch yards would be in this portion, have the same setback requirements as the rest of the site. And I suggested that we can take this out and establish other setbacks that are reduced in some specific landscaping requirements just for these. Who is happy with, you know, leaving it in at the established setbacks of two hundred feet and a hundred and fifty feet?
Can I ask just...
Yes.
Clarification?
Uh huh.
So when you're saying different setbacks, so let's say that there's a hundred and fifty feet between the property line and where the site actually starts. You're saying the substations and the switch yards would be within that hundred and fifty feet, but they also be screened individually?
So the way this can be done is that if it is on, because some of these are not located on the immediate project site. So, you know, this is a case where you do have, you know, here's your project site, and, you know, we've had to go over here to connect to your transmission line, and so we have, you know, a substation or switch yard out here. And so that's what this would be talking about, and we can ensure that, you know, if it is on the main project site, that it meets the main project setback guidelines, so that you're not having, you know, the site here and then something, you know, jutting out from it.
So this is always like an off-site facility?
Correct.
Tracy, do we have rules on that now? Like, if it weren't, say, for this, just other places in the county, would we already have ways that that would be dictated, or no?
Well, if it falls as a, if it's needed to the utility company, it's exempt from any requirements. So we don't regulate the ones that we have now.
Hence the need to regulate it at this stage, because we won't be able to regulate it later.
Just a kind of a point of clarification for you folks. I think you've done a fine job. But in this case, the debate that we had was whether to use our existing setbacks until we see the site. And, and there was a, I think, a reasonable concern that your original draft did not include or even mention substations, although we feel very likely they might be on the property. And so, it's a compromise.
And so when they're on the, when they're on the property, yes, certainly abide by, you know, the setbacks that are established for the project. If it's going off-site, it does give you the opportunity to consider some mitigation.
If it's off-site, it's going to be, most likely, it's going to be unregulated.
I think this addresses something that we hadn't anticipated.
Very likely.
I think this is something that we had always considered it being on-site, and this is something new that we had not anticipated.
Okay, okay. So are we okay with, you know, considering this as, you know, a separate item that we would talk about?
Just one more thing. Having said that, since we hadn't anticipated, my suggestion would be, we ought to look at whatever you prepare, so that we can see it for the first time, because we've never considered it.
How about leaving this in as far as it concerns the substations that are located on the same project, and then adding a separate section as you're recommending for substations and switch yards that are not included in the project?
Yeah, that's what I'm, yeah.
But leave, but leave this in.
We were responding to information that was provided to us from you that didn't even mention them. And so that created concern.
Right.
And reasonable concern, because they are unregulated normally.
Right. And this line, it is assumed that it's understood that the switch yards and substations, when they're on their site, they're included. And if you want to call that out and make sure, that's totally okay.
I think that there could be debate about whether these setbacks are large or large enough or small enough. There would be a lot of debate about that. But I don't think there's any debate about whether the onsite substation or utility switch yard would need to be screened. It would need to be screened, of course. And so, the setback, whatever we determine for the project should apply to these until now, in name, in your presentation.
Right. So are we...
And they may need to be increased, because there was a remark that we made about the height of the panels, that you had measured from the lowest part of the panels, that we wanted to limit it to the top of the panels. In my understanding, substations are usually way taller than that. The equipment of a substation is way, way taller. So then, at that point, we have a problem with maximum height, if it's part of a project. So I do agree, we need to include a separate set of rules for the substation, because the height doesn't apply. Screaming might need to be higher, buffer zones or setbacks higher in order to screen the substation. So I agree that we add some setbacks and specific requirements in addition to what we have here.
Okay.
They're a different animal, and they're way, way ugly.
So do we, do we want to see some drafted elements for that?
Yes.
Okay, looks like a consensus there. So the next item is about the graded surface area, the seventy-five E. And this is really where I needed some clarification, because like I said before, you know, this opened up the site to not include other equipment areas and your access roads and that sort of thing, which struck me, and from what I'm hearing, you know, tonight, probably as, you know, maybe that was not the intention, so...
I think, I think a little bit of clarification on this is that, if you recall, there's a distance that you have to be from a transmission line. And if you become an expert on the infrastructure of a Page County, you will know that...
Transmission lines.
Transmission lines are...
Are local.
Are not, they're rare.
Right.
And so, while you're, I don't know, the ten percent slope was something you provided to us. We didn't have a lot of debate about that.
That's not the question.
I know, but I'm just letting you know, that wasn't a lot of debate about that. But there's no way we're going to get to ten percent slope in terms of the outer reaches of this map, because the transmission lines won't allow us to get to the mountains, unless we're doing transmission lines.
The transmission line, the transmission line is standing, is standing well. That's not the issue. The issue, it goes back to the sixty-five percent. It's the stuff outside, it's the thirty-five percent that's not included in this calculation, because the sixty-five percent is the piece that's generating the power, and that's what we're pointing it down to, is that thirty-five percent could all be graded, and that could be creating E and S problems. So this statement in red creates the loophole for them to do a lot more grading and make it a ten.
Yes.
But that's not a good idea.
Exactly, that's why she's pointing this out.
So we don't want that in there. I think it was a mistake.
I thought your issue was the ten percent.
No, 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 it's not the ten percent.
So...
I think it was a mistake.
In your presentation, I think you said...
No.
So I'm, so, hold on, if you'll let me. What I mentioned was, you know, you can consider that, you can consider your slopes, because when we, when we drafted this, this is, you know, us having not been here, this is us not having, you know, discussions with you, so this is our, you know, quick recommendations for you all to determine, okay, what does Page County need? And so you can, you know, adjust all of these numbers, you know, how you desire. So I wanted to, you know, point that out, because I felt like, in looking at some of the draft, that maybe you felt like some things were written in stone, and I wanted to say... And I wanted to say, this is not written in stone. So, that was my point there. But my larger concern here is that the text that's in red of where the panels are located, other portions of the site that is not considered and can create grading beyond the 50%. And I wanted to make sure you understood that and to see if that was the intent or not the intent.
I do not think that was the intent.
No, it wasn't. I don't even remember us discussing this and adding it in. I don't have it in my notes and my edits at all.
This came straight from the minutes. And when Rebecca and I talked about this, I can, I can go back through my notes and figure out why we had that either, so. But.
So, that's probably a mistake. Let's take it out.
So, is that the consensus from the group, that we can remove this portion from 75E?
Yes.
Raise of hands. I see some nodding, but I want to make sure. Okay. Yeah. So, that is all of the questions, except for we did put a pin in number three, the max acreage. It is 8:30. Are you okay? Is anyone starving, ready to go home? Or do we want to discuss the acreage a little bit and see if we can narrow down that number and see if, you know, maybe I can provide you with some more examples? I feel like the example with the 500 acres was helpful. And so, maybe if I provide some additional examples, because to answer your question, how do people typically go about, you know, figuring out that number? And so, you know, most people aren't savvy on, okay, how much is a megawatt? What does that really mean? But they know acreage, especially if I can provide a map, right, that shows, here's 500 acres. And so, typically, most localities are thinking acreage. You know, they know Uncle Joe's Farm is 600 acres. You know, they know my neighbor has, you know, 200 acres. And so, that's kind of, you know, where they're thinking is, you know, is it okay? Can we absorb that type of utility scale facility on that amount of acreage? Does that seem, you know, feasible if we have a couple of those in the community? It also comes from, you know, looking at the maps. You know, you've, you've put restrictions in, and maybe that's something that you want to do. You've put restrictions in, you looked at a map that showed all of the restrictions, but that has changed. And so, maybe now you want to look at a map that, that shows the restrictions that you have currently drafted. And so, what does that leave? How much acreage does that leave? What type of parcels are in the acreage that's left? So, that might be something to consider. If, you know, those parcels, you know, have some huge parcels or there's, you know, some, you know, several that are 100, 200 acres, you know, those types of puzzle pieces can maybe give you an idea of applications that you might see and what you would be comfortable with. So, to answer your question, it is from an acreage thought process. So, are we ready to continue the acreage discussion?
Yes. Let's continue then.
Okay. Yes?
On that note, if I recall correctly, the subcommittee had recommended and we concurred that we would consider not only acreage, but also wattage, megawattage as a maximum. Why have you chosen to just say 500 acres? Why can't we say and/or 40 megawatts, for instance, if that's the basis of you? I think that would be good. You know why? Because technology is constantly improving. And there might be a whole lot more megawatts that are squeezed out of 500 acres within a few years with tremendous battery storage, which could become a real problem if we only limit to acreage. If we limit to acreage and/or megawatts, we know we can cap mega, mega facilities.
So, that is an option? And was that in the original draft, I feel like?
As I recall, we started with megawatts. It was hard to understand. We asked that acreage be considered. And now, it sounds like we'd like that. But that's, that's the history of it. It began with what she mentioned, but that was difficult.
And it is.
Difficult to process.
Yes. What is 40 megawatts? Right.
A little, a little beyond some myself.
Right. So, you know, so that is something that, you know, can be done. It can be added to, you know, say, here's your acreage size limit and here is your megawatt limit. That is something that can be done. Yes?
So, with anything, what are the pros and cons of doing acreage? If we include the 65% and for megawatts, what is what?
I would say. Over that you still have a burning question about, I'm available to answer some of those.
What question? What's your name?
Rebecca Cobb, C-O-B-B.
In as much as we looked at small, medium, and large industrial-type services. I'd like to step back to the concept of being so far from residential property. It seems to me that with some of those applications, I just want to make sure we're not restricting. I, I think it will be necessary for some of this, at least moderately sized or medium sized, which is probably more applicable and maybe a little better fit for our community. It might be necessary for those to be somewhat close to residential facilities. So, we were kind of, there are lots of things that we have wrestled with. But that is one of the areas that we, that was one of the areas that we were going to probably have to come back to. Now, I don't want to ignore the gorilla. The gorilla, the big gorillas, the big units too. They're currently not going to be allowed within the service areas. Nobody really knows exactly where that is, except staff. They kind of know where that is. It's a line on the map. So, I appreciate the fact that you're going to take a look at those things. But if you would please kind of take a look from all aspects of that to make sure that, that we're not creating a limit to agricultural use of solar power or for subdivisions that may require this in a short period of time. Because I think Shetter Valley Electric is already planning for smaller service areas that probably need to be relatively close to the folks that they're serving. And we look like we're about to, or maybe we would unmindfully or unintentionally, we might limit that possibility. I really appreciate what you all are doing. I know this is difficult, but very helpful.
Yes, I will, you know, keep that in mind while we're looking at the small scale and medium scale to, you know, consider those residential developments. That's a good point. And we'll take a look at that while we're doing this next draft. Any other questions?
Why have you not included any provisions regarding permit duration?
So, from what I understand, and I think that's part of the conditions that are listed here, is that that's something that the county already does. So, when you consider your conditional permits, you are already limiting that. And so, that's entirely up to you guys and how you want to do it. What we have, you know, seen is that, you know, the facilities usually kind of have their lifespan that they're planning on anyway. And so, many of the localities do not put a limit on it. But if that's something that, you know, you all want to do during that conditional use permit process, that's something that you can do.
Sorry, I missed, what did you ask?
Time limits for this permit. Any other questions?
Maybe it's too far, you know, we're not far enough into this, in the state. But I just wondered, you know, from a residential development standpoint, the last few years, there's been this movement toward clustering and wanting to sort of pack as much of it into one area as possible. I mean, is that sort of the same strategy that the localities are trying to do with this stuff? I mean, as we've talked about, you know, in a county like ours, you're kind of constrained by where the, where the trunk lines are anyway. But again, it's just, I didn't know what you're seeing other places, if they're still trying to say, hey, put it, put it on this side of the county versus that side, or if that really hasn't become an issue yet, so.
In, in one of the localities that I work in, that has been an issue. In fact, there were several facilities that was, that was, you know, locating very much near a city that was inside the county. And, and the city had concerns and said, you know, wait a minute, how are we going to grow if we have all of these, you know, backed up? Because that's where the power was. So, that's where they were, you know, wanting to locate. And so, they, you know, put the brakes on and that community is actually trying to disperse them further. So, it's not too much of one use in one location and not too much, you know, environmental impact in one location. So, they really are requiring, you know, that limit on, if, if sites are within so many acres, I mean, so many miles of each other, then there's a limit on the acres that it can be or, you know, and stretching out the distance that they have to be apart.
So, the restrictions, we already kind of had, you're seeing that sort of strategy elsewhere. They're not, they're not trying to cluster, if you will.
No, no. Anybody else have questions? Okay. So, just as a reminder, because I know we've talked a lot of things, next steps, I'm going to, you know, incorporate the edits that I've heard tonight so that you all can take a look at that. Also, I would add to this that we're going to, you know, get you some maps so that you can consider that acreage question and probably some, some more illustrations of what that looks like, I think would be helpful. And so, you can review that, make some final decisions on the, the language. And then you would schedule public hearings and then, you know, recommend it to the board of supervisors, who would also have a public hearing and then potential adoption into the zoning ordinance. And so, I just, I want to thank you all for your time. It's, it's been great. It's also great to have some public here. I know it's difficult under these circumstances to come out and be and work that out to have room for everyone. So, thank you all for your time and we will be back in touch.
Thank you very much, Rebecca.
Do we have, do we have any contacts for you in case we come up with concerns and things that we haven't thought of, you know, tonight?
So, I would just ask that you send everything to Tracy and Tracy and I will, will continue to be in contact and, and work on everything.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, let's move on. Adoption of the minutes for June 23rd and July 7th. Has everybody been able to read through them or have any comments or anything they want to have about them? If not, let's make a motion.
I'm going to read the documents separately.
July 7th and June 23rd?
Yes.
All right. Do I get a second?
Second.
Second from Don Middleton. All right. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right. We don't have any unfinished business right now. Does anybody have anything? All right. I don't have a term of service report tonight. Tracy, do you have a clerk's report?
Just real short, there is a draft that is in your stack of packet here. To, we're going to put that on the agenda for the next meeting to discuss the electronic participation in the meetings. So, I just, I would encourage you to look over that and be prepared to discuss it for the next meeting.
Any more discussion? Anybody have anything else? If not, adjourned.
Yeah, because that's.
How are you?